Councilman Campbell.
Here.
Councilwoman Willingham.
Present.
Councilman Jenkins.
Here.
Councilman Twiggy.
Here.
Councilman Paul.
Here.
I'm gonna hand the opening prayer back to Mr. Twiggy.
Please bow our heads, please. Father, we thank you for this opportunity that you have given us to see another of your days. Your world is beautiful to us and we're grateful for each and every one. And tonight, as we come to discuss the business of the city, we pray that you would continue to be with us, continue to give us encouragement, give us courage, give us strength, and give us wisdom, that we might do what would be beneficial for the city of Camilla. For these things, we ask in thy name, amen.
That'll stand for the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with everything and justice for all. You may proceed. We will have a motion to approve the minutes of the February 14 session.
So moved.
Certainly.
It has been both proper motion and second that we would approve the minutes of the 14, February 14 session. You've had time for city residents to question. Those who approve, let it be known by show of hands. Those who disapprove, about seven. Before we go into the business, will you want to put it?
Yes, ma'am. Serious of these public hearings.
Okay, so you're gonna get me in now?
Right. Well, first, we'll be on the CDVG, and then we'll have one for the rezonings and the conditioners. Basically, two public hearings.
Okay, we have two public hearings. The first one is on the CDVG project. Who is it?
Okay. We've got a requirement to have a public hearing at the conclusion of any of our block grant programs before we close the program out, and that's the purpose of tonight's first public hearing. And the subject of this particular one is a CDVG grant that the city received to replace and improve water lines and fire hydrants down Baggs Ferry Road connecting with the school complex and serving Powell Trailer Park, which is in the city. And we published notice at this hearing in the paper, and I'd like to give you just a few words about some of what went on in that grant. But the best part about it is the bids for that particular grant came in below the grant amount, so we were able to divert funds from that particular grant to an additional project, wherein we replaced a number of water lines and fire hydrants in Jester Homes and in some of the cul-de-sacs on the left side of Peachtree Street as you depart from city limits. But I've got a few specifics on this particular one, and I'll just hit the highlights. We provided a six-inch diameter water mains and numerous fire hydrants to Powell subdivision. This area originally had only two-inch diameter water mains and no fire protection. And we provided the residents of the city of Camilla that fire protection and, of course, decreased the apparent water pressure and water availability all down Baggs Ferry, not only to the residents along there, but the industry that we have along Baggs Ferry Road. The second project that I mentioned, which was as a result of the bid coming in well below the grant amount, bore assist improvements to Jester Homes. And all pipes within Jester Homes are now PVC and fire hydrants located within a 500-foot radius of all residences, and that's something we didn't have before. So this was a great project, and we were very lucky that the original part of it came in under bid and we were able to get a grant amendment to use that money rather than to have to turn that back in. In terms of specifics, we installed 4,500 linear feet of 12-inch water main, 16,000 linear feet of 6-inch water main. We installed 27 new fire hydrants, 61 new gate valves, and 206 water meters. And we received a grant of $500,000, and the city's match was $90,000. So all total, about a $590,000 project, but one, it was well needed and served some undeserved areas in our community, and now they've got a much better water system and fire protection that they did not have until this came to fruition. So very proud of this project. We've got an additional CDVG that will be closing out about a year from now, about this time next year, that's doing sewer lines in Jester Homes, so don't get those two confused. It's an absolutely separate grant, and that's, will be closed out here sometime later this year. And that concludes the synopsis on that. Any questions at all? If not, we can close the public hearing for this.
Are there any questions?
The next public hearing we have are on a number of rezoning recommendations from the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Planning and Zoning Department. Charles, would you like to get up and talk just about those, or Lynn, just briefly, based on the recommendations from the Planning Commission?
Yes, we had our public hearing last Monday night, and we came with recommendations for 108 South Party, the Michigan School Board of Education. That's carting the park there, going south from R2 to C2, Central Business District, and we recommend that that be rezoned. And joining that to the south of that school, Michigan Board of Education, probably would sit in Camilla property at 133 Perry Street, which includes the gym and the old band right around that. And we recommending that that be changed from R2 to C2, C2 being the Central Business District. And then joining that at 144 South Party Street, Boys and Girls Club of Michigan County, the Stevens property, purchase that property and using that for an administrative building, administrative office. And we're recommending that that be rezoned from R2 to C2, Central Business District, and it'll make that whole piece of property down there, C2. And that 144 South Party where the Stevens' house was, that property keep the, look of a residential district, no, that the property keep the aesthetics of a residential neighborhood, and that all that signage there be of a two-foot square on the, on the house, so that it does not really stand out as a, as an office, but more, but keeps in the aesthetics of that residential area down there.
Lynn, let me ask you something. What about the parking? Is it gonna be adequate?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Because you got the law added, the street to go back there to the Boys and Girls Club, all that still is, still be available to the Boys and Girls Club.
Lynn, you wanna cover it while we're at it? You've gotten all the rezonings, since they're all fundamentally the same, the conditional use, and then you can...
We can go ahead. At 400 South Party, Gerald Hagan came and wanted a rezoning of that piece of property from R1 to R3. We went through the process there, and we're recommending that that R3, that piece of property, 400 South Party, be rezoned from R1 to R3 LU, which is a limited use. And that limited use will be a two-family, two-family residence, limited use for a family personal care home. And that first personal care home, get a conditional use in R3. For a family personal care home, with the following stipulations: that the exterior must remain residential in character, a maximum of six residents with live-in care, and that all state licensing requirements be met prior to operation, that only adults 18 years of age above be resident there, and that all residents must be ambulatory, and the signage must be approved by commission. Generally, that signage still requires a two-foot square sign attached to the building, and that if the property ceased to be used for its intended purpose, an order must cause for 30 days, so that's what we're recommending, that if it does not continue to be used in for 30 days, that it revert back to R1, single-family district.
Thank you.
One of the, hold on, ma'am.
We have had a motion. If you could discuss it a little bit. If there are any comments about this, please, we'll come up again in motions, and be a chance for discussion on them. If there are no comments, we can close this public hearing.
Are there any other comments? Not yet ready for it.
Yeah, we can move in, and I'd like to say a few words before we start. Next item up is our report from the Administrative Committee, and I would like to give you sort of a preamble to the first, first topic. On February 15th, early morning hours of February 15th, still in darkness, we had a catastrophic vehicle accident up in front of Eckery Group on Highway 19. Involved several tractor-trailer rigs and a couple passenger vehicles. I think probably all of you may have seen some of the cuts that were on WAOV and Fox, but I can tell you I arrived out there just about daylight, and the devastation was incredible. It looked like the beach scene out of Omaha Beach in Saving Private Ryan, if you saw that movie. Absolute devastation, fire, smoldering, parts and pieces, cargo spread over all four lanes of US-19, exacerbated by the fog and the smoke. It looked like, it's a vision that I see rarely in my life, and we're very fortunate because our, your city employees responded immediately and were able to assist back accident victims, put out the fires. We've got Public Works out there with front-end loaders that pushed the debris away to open all four lanes. Got our limb trucks, the ones that pick up the limb tuns and all, both limb trucks out there to pick up debris. County helped us tremendously by sending dump trucks, and the bottom line is, by about 3 o'clock in the afternoon, you couldn't tell anything that happened there. It was a phenomenal response, and extremely proud of your city employees. They did a great job. While we often say, "Well," that's sort of in the job description of the Fire Department and Police Department, I assure you this is not in the job description of anyone in Public Works, cleaning up accidents on Highway 19, but they were out there, Johnny on the spot, took control of the situation, and I just stood back and watched. And that's the great thing about your employees, you don't have to tell them, they see it and do it. And it was, it was a marvelous demonstration. We're very fortunate in this city. And we've asked all the individuals that participated in that to come in this evening. We have a motion, and we would like to make a resolution on their behalf, and so I believe we can start now with that first. If we can have those people come in. Reginald, can you ask all those folks to come in? Goodbye.
I just wanna say, Camilla is real proud, real, real proud. You don't find people of this type in Camilla. I've been here, I think, longer than anybody, and to see what Mr. Larkin had said took place and what you did, as I say, you done good, and it's just to be commended. And we will now have a report from the Administrator.
Right. A resolution has been presented to council to recognize city employees who participated in the early morning accident that occurred on Highway 19 on February 15th. Because of combined efforts of the police, fire, and Public Works Departments, the accident scene was cleared in an expeditious manner. The Administrative Committee recommends approval of the resolution and authorizes the mayor to sign the document. That's in the form of a motion. Second. Your vice president can read the resolution. Whereas during the early morning hours of February 15, 2011, there occurred a catastrophic accident on US-19 North involving multiple commercial trucks and passenger vehicles, and whereas the magnitude of the accident was such that the northbound and southbound lanes of US-19 North, of US-19 were obstructed by mangled vehicles, burning debris, and tons of cargo spread and disarray about the area, and whereas the elements of the Camilla Police Department and Fire Department were dispatched immediately, and in spite of darkness and limited visibility created by smoke and fog, quickly and professionally secured the area, assisted accident victims, and extinguished blazing vehicles and smoldering cargo. And whereas elements of Camilla Public Works Department were dispatched thereafter to spearhead the massive cleanup effort, and did so with a high degree of urgency and unparalleled professionalism, and whereas because of the combined efforts of the city of Camilla's professional and highly competent personnel, the accident scene was cleared in an expeditious manner, and traffic flow along this vital transportation corridor was restored to normal conditions without incident. And now, therefore, the mayor and city council hereby commend and recognize the following personnel for their extraordinary professionalism and dedicated service to the community demonstrated during the response to this major accident. And I'm going to read off the names of these folks, and if you'd just sort of raise your hand or let us know who you are, everybody may not know every one of them. Investigator Vernon O.
Just step out, you little...
Captain Tyler Echop. Captain Shane Doltry.
We've gotta hear her back.
Corporal Aaron Wilson.
He's a woman, isn't he?
Okay. Officer James Everts. Officer Donald McNeil. Officer Todd Pickle-Simmer. Did I get that right?
Yes, sir.
Close enough, huh? Chief Bobby Beck. Lieutenant Shane Stinson. Firefighter Santos Gonzalez. Firefighter Brandon Moore. Firefighter Robert King. Firefighter Jeremy Neill. Superintendent David Bickerstaff. Joe Jones. Anthony Cole. Willie Calaway. Derek Jackson. Frederick Jones. Reginald Williams. William Verley Vicks. So was all of this 14th day of March 2011. And we've got the motion and the second.
Do we have a motion? We have a motion, maybe we have a second?
Yeah.
It has been both proper motion and second that this report from the Administrative Committee and the resolution be accepted. You've had time to consider the other questions. Those in favor, let it be known by show of hands. Those who oppose, rise your hands. The motion is carried.
Thank you very much for your service.
The only, the motion you gotta fix.
The resolutions will have 2010 on, it's about to report that.
I did that. I was better to do stuff like that.
And, second, whereas concerning the northbound and southbound lanes of US-19 North, US-19 North and US-19 Public Purposes. What do you want?
He's more of a... Should've let him do that.
All right, you have the rest to go.
Item two, council reviewed a request to close our CDVG project number 08P-X-101-2-5031, and close the associated bank account at Bank of Camilla number 03-206-50-4. This project was for the water system improvements. The Administrative Committee recommends approval to close out the CDVG project and the associated bank account. That's in the form of a motion.
Second.
You heard the motion as they had a discussion. Those in favor, let it be known by show of hands. Those who oppose, rise your hands. The motion is carried.
Planning Commission made a recommendation to approve an ordinance for a zoning change for property located at 108 South Party Street. The request was made by the Michigan Board of Education. The property is currently zoned R2, single-family residential district. The Board of Education has requested the property to be rezoned to C2, Central Business District, for the purpose of bringing the zoning into the city of Camilla's comprehensive plan. The Administrative Committee recommends adoption of the ordinance and waive the second reading. And I believe the city attorney can give us a brief synopsis of the orders.
Want me to read it, or you?
It depends on how long it is.
Yes, well, there, you got four of them, they're all about the same.
All the same.
How about the down and out, and do the therefore, so that be acceptable? Now, therefore, bid ordained by the mayor and council of the city of Camilla and hereby enacted by authority the same, that the recommendation of Planning Commission of the city of Camilla to rezon the property here and above referred to from R2, single-family residential district, to C2, central business district, be, and the same is hereby approved, and the Planning Commission is hereby authorized to amend the official zoning map of the city to reflect the change hereby approved, so ordained this regular session this 14th day of March, after waiving the second reading. I think you have a motion to...
I'll second, yeah, I'll second, yes, sir.
It has been both proper motion and second that we accept this recommendation from the Administrative Committee's standing question. And if you vote those in favor, let it be known by show of hands. Those opposed by show of hands. The motion is carried.
Item four, Planning Commission made a recommendation to approve an ordinance for a zoning change for property located at 133 Perry Street. Request was made by the city of Camilla. The property is currently zoned R2, single-family district, and the city of Camilla has requested the property to be rezoned to C2, Central Business District, for the purpose of bringing the zoning into the city of Camilla's comprehensive plan. Administrative Committee recommends adoption of the ordinance and waive the second reading. That's in the form of a motion, and the city attorney can...
I'll address that. Now, therefore, bid ordained by the mayor and council of the city of Camilla, is hereby enacted by authority the same, that the recommendation of Planning Commission of the city of Camilla to rezon the property here and above referred to from R2, single-family residential district, to C2, central business district, be, and the same is hereby approved, and the Planning Commission is hereby authorized to amend the official zoning map of the city to reflect the change hereby approved, so ordained this 14th day of March 2011, after waiving the second reading.
You've heard the motion as they had a discussion. Those in favor, let it be known by show of hands. Those who oppose, rise your hands. The motion is carried.
Item five, Planning Commission made a recommendation to approve an ordinance for a zoning change for property located at 144 South Party Street. The request was made by Boys and Girls Clubs of Michigan County. The property is currently zoned R2, single-family residential district. Boys and Girls Clubs have requested the property to be rezoned to C2, Central Business District, for the purpose of an administrative office and to bring the zoning into the city of Camilla's comprehensive plan. Planning Commission has recommended that the city approve the rezoning with two stipulations: property keeps aesthetics of a residential neighborhood, and all signage must be approved by the Planning and Zoning Department. The Administrative Committee recommends adoption of the ordinance with stipulations and waive the second reading. That's in the form of a motion.
Second.
Now, therefore, bid ordained by the mayor and council of the city of Camilla and hereby enacted by authority the same, that the recommendation of Planning Commission of the city of Camilla to rezon the property here and above referred to from R2, single-family residential district, to C2, central business district, be, and the same is hereby approved, and the Planning Commission is hereby authorized directly to amend the official zoning map of the city to reflect the change hereby approved, so ordained this regular session this 14th day of March 2011, after waiving the second reading.
Now, in pro tempore, as part of discussion, we might ask Ms. Davis, Andrea Davis, the Boys and Girls Club Executive Director, just to give us an update on what is planned...
Ms. Davis, well, you sold it, didn't you?
Yes, yes, ma'am, I love...
And, 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 uh, tell us about the parking, the parking issue we brought up.
Okay, the building, the house was, was, actually, we got a really good deal on getting it. We're gonna actually, the reason that we felt like the board, felt like we should purchase it, is because that we can actually have a presence on Party Street. Not only that, we can kind of tailor who actually is gonna be there in that house right behind the kids, right in front of the kids. So it was a good thing. And what we decided to do, since our offices, our administrative offices are located in the teen center, we would, it would best fit us to move, there's gonna be two offices there, and the parking is not gonna be a problem, because we park right behind in the regular parking lot. So I think it's a good thing for the Boys and Girls Club, it's a good thing for the community, because we can tailor who's gonna actually be in there. Bye. Anything else? And actually, we, we're, we gotta do a little work to it, but it's gonna be awesome. It's gonna be good for the community.
And you're thinking about opening up some of the back, to the back parking lot?
Yes, so I can walk back and forth, to make sure that everything is going, so I won't be too far from the kids.
You're gonna let everybody know when you're gonna have your open house?
I sure will, and we need furniture. Anything you guys got to give away, we take. We appreciate you so much. Thank you.
If they had further discussion, those in favor, the motion let it be shown by show of hands. Those who oppose, rise your hands. The motion is carried.
Item six, the Planning Commission made a recommendation to approve an ordinance for a zoning change for property located at 400 South Party Street. This request was made by Gerald Hagan. The property is currently zoned R1, single-family residential district. Mr. Hagan has requested the property to be rezoned to R3 LU, two-family and multiple-family residential district, limited use as a family personal care home. The Administrative Committee recommends adoption of the ordinance and waive the second reading. That's in the form of a motion.
Second.
Now, therefore, bid ordained by the mayor and council of the city of Camilla and hereby enacted by authority the same, that the recommendation of Planning Commission of the city of Camilla to rezon the property here and above referred to from R1, single-family residential district, to R3 LU, two-family, multifamily residential district, limited use as a family personal care home. Should the property cease to be used, thus by purpose, for more than 180 days following commencement of business operations, then the same would revert back to R1, single-family residential district. The zoning change for the property is further conditioned upon the requirement that any changes, renovations, or additions to the existing structure shall be compatible and complementary to the existing structure and the aesthetics of a residential neighborhood. The use of the property shall comply with all other federal, state, and local laws, rules, and regulations, be and the same is hereby approved, and the Planning Commission is hereby authorized directly to amend the official zoning map of the city to reflect the change hereby approved, so ordained this regular session this 14th day of March 2011, after waiving the second reading.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor, let it be shown, know by show of hands, always going over here.
He's in the corner, he's knocking on the corner.
There's Washington now. That's another league to deal with him.
Didn't we have a show of hands?
Yes.
Those who oppose by show of hands. The motion is carried.
Our last item, the Planning Commission made a recommendation to approve an ordinance for a conditional use for property located at 400 South Party Street. The request was made by Gerald Hagan. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the conditional use as a family personal care home with the following stipulations: the exterior of all structures must remain residential in character, a maximum of two to six residents with a live-in care given, all state licensing requirements must be complied with prior to operation, limited to individuals 18 years old and above, all residents must be ambulatory, all signage must be approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. If property ceases to be used for the intended purpose for more than eight, 180 days, the conditional use provision is null and void. The Administrative Committee recommends adoption of the ordinance with stipulations and waive the second reading. That's in the form of a motion.
Second.
Now, therefore, bid ordained by the mayor and council of the city of Camilla and hereby enacted by authority the same, that the request to grant a conditional use of the property here and above referred to as family, as a family personal care home under section 7.03, item A, article... point oh three, item eight, Article Roman number seven, R3 dash LU Two Family, Multi Family Residential District Limited Use as a Family Personal Care Home, be and the same as hereby approved, such provisions of the zoning ordinance of the City of Camilla and subject to all other ordinance and licensing requirements of the City of Camilla. So ordained in regular session this fourteenth day of March two thousand eleven after waiving the second reading.
You've heard the motion. It's in discussion.
Uh, parking was not mentioned. I'm sure it didn't talk about. Do we have any kind of problem with parking?
No problem with parking.
No problem with parking.
Even if you have six individuals in the L U, all of them had, had a vehicle in the car, taken out of the vehicle, that's seven vehicles, and the, in the Apple area, parking area.
Okay. Yep. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Those who approve of the motion let it be known by show of hands. Those disapprove by show of hands. The motion is carried.
That's all we have.
We're gonna have a report from the Public Works Committee.
Development Authority of the City of Camilla can to lease agreement with Cameron Mayet Inc. Corporation, enjoyed the cooperation February third nineteen ninety-four to construct a four thousand eight hundred square foot aircraft hangar, office, office, and maintenance facility adjacent to the airport. Development Authority had it deemed to land back to the city and assign the lease of the city. Public Works Committee recommend acceptance of the limited warranty deed and agreement lease agreed, and Authority's deemed may have to sign the document.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
Mike, give us just a little update on that.
I will. Uh, we're, we're applying for a grant, uh, to build a, a new parking ramp, uh, install some more rental hangers. We've got a waiting list of people that want hangers out there. It's a good source of revenue for the city, and we have aircraft out there, they buy fuel out there, which is another source of revenue force. Uh, where we need to put that pad encroaches slightly on the leased premises that's subject to this lease assignment. In order to apply for the grant, the property has to be owned by the city. Uh, this property originally was the city's, it was, it was deemed to the Development Authority. Now we're gonna get it back so we can, uh, apply for the grant. And so, uh, it's a deed of property back to the city and an assignment of the ongoing lease. So that's what that's about.
Is there any further discussion? Those who approve let it be known by show of hands. Those who disapprove by show of hands. The motion is so carried.
The council reviews boundary lines agreement fair by attorney William L. Tideson Junior between Charles L. Bond. What is that for?
Go on.
Go on.
Go on.
Go on, Junior Chan, the City of Camilla. This agreement is a great survey error in residence lots from years past and allow clear title of the property. The city will convey a small section of the property upon going to facilitate the title correction and will grant an easement of the associated driveway. The Public Works Committee recommend approval of agreement and authority of the mayor to sign these documents.
Second.
Would you like to give us?
Uh, I, I will. Uh, this, this is rather convoluted story, but years ago, uh, there was apparently a survey error of a property description, one or the two or both, uh, in delineating a piece of platted property that's now being sold. And in order to provide clear title, uh, to the buyer, uh, at the request of his lender, we have to, we have to make sure the property description matches the actual boundaries of the property on the platte. In addition, there's about a six-foot to seven-foot, uh, piece of city property that somehow ended up between the southern boundary of this piece of property and the city driveway. Uh, and, uh, the, the owner is also requesting an easement across that property to the street. The driveway has hardly been used for sixty or seventy years or more, uh, but to make this correct, uh, they, they technically need an easement to cross that city property to get to the highway. They're crossing at that juncture about six and a half feet of it. Uh, so this was rather involved as far as the legal works concerned. I would, would like for someone here who has that authority to add a, uh, onto that motion, uh, appropriately, that, uh, we, we sign this and all when the city's being, has been reimbursed for all legal expenses that the city incurred and working through this legal wicket to get this, uh, done for the property.
I'll make that part of the motion.
Certainly, for me.
So I, I can read that amendment.
Amendment.
So it would be the mayor to sign the document as soon as the city's been reimbursed for all legal expenses incurred in this regard. If that was all.
So now we need to vote on amendment.
Vote, just sort of the whole thing, the motion as amended.
Okay. May I have a motion to that?
I, I'll make the motion.
Second. Mike, where is this property?
It's on the corner of Harney Street and, uh, Longest Street. It's an old stucco, Spanish-style home with a, a brick wall on it.
Yes, it's a, it's a, yeah.
It's a little sliver of property south of that fence, of, of that wall before you get to the street, the city property, so that-
The line is on a tetter corn, I mean, it's just knocked straight with the road and therefore you got a sliver up this way and a sliver back this way, so we had to square it up basically, wasn't it?
Now we're ready with the motion now. Is there any further discussion? Now we're ready. Those in favor, let it be known by show of hands. Those not in favor, let it be known by show of hands.
The council reviewed an easement by the equity group that will allow the city to construct a gas line to wind gap farms. The Public Works Committee recommend acceptance of the easement and authorities, authorized the mayor to sign the document.
Second. It has been both proper motion and second. Is there any discussion? I think that's kind of simplest manner to her. Those in favor let it be known by show of hands. Those who oppose by show of hands.
The city manager, Locken, discussed salary increase by the city compt George, court judge, position. The salary is so deemed with the position of the current at six hundred thousand-
Six hundred thousand.
Six hundred dollars.
Six hundred dollars per month.
We can't vote on that.
The city's there for five to month and the, 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 and lands approximately six hour per court date, per section of the type furniture salary increased to the same percentage of the city employee received each of the new budget year. The Public Works Committee recommend approval of the increased effective add to what next pay period, and the future increase to be tapped to the percentage of the city employee.
Ms. Locken, you're gonna put a little more-
Uh-huh.
Tea in the back.
The, uh, city judge is Judge Robert Richardson, uh, who's also an attorney here in town. We have a city court twice a month. Uh, over the years, the caseload has become more and more. He's spending a lot more time than, uh, than he originally was spending years ago. Uh, the city has not raised the salary to that position. Uh, he averages six to seven hours twice a month down there. If you do the math, that's fifty dollars an hour or less. Uh, his services are worth far more than that to the city, and, uh, I think it's time that we, uh, we give him an appropriate raise and then tie any future raises to the same that city employees get. And, uh, uh, this is something that, uh, we didn't intentionally keep it this low, it was just sort of out of sight, out of mind, uh, and it's been that way for years and stayed that way for years, and, uh, it's something I think that we need to do. He does a good job for us, I think he's very fair. Uh, he's well-liked, and like I say, he's working, uh, a lot of hours for the city, and, uh, what, uh, is a difficult job sometimes. He has to make some, uh, hard decisions, tough decisions, but he's fair about them, and I think he's done a very good job for us.
And this, uh, recommendation is to move from six hundred a month to seven fifty should have been.
Is there any further discussion? A question. Those in favor of increasing the city court judge's fee salary from six hundred dollars to seven hundred fifty dollars per month, let it be known by show of hands. Those opposed by show of hands. The judge will not get seven fifty per month.
In late two ten, the Mitchell County School Board notified the Mitchell County Recreation Department and other potential interest parties that the gymnasium located an old Walker Inland, old Walker Inland school complex was available as a surplus of property. The county Recreation Department declined, they offered due to the, the, the left, um, gymnasium.
No. Condition.
Condition of the facility and the fact that the department already had the use of the gymnasium that was well-suited for existing future recreation program. The council discussed the old facility on several occasions, but due to high cost of the necessary renovation, the lack of, of a definite purpose of, of need for such a facility, since the county is represented by a city recreation program available, they increased a lot better by the city of owning the property in the island authority, planning a single-family home expansion in the immediate conundetic area. The Public Works Committee recommend that the city notify Mitchell County School Board that the city does not desire the property, property. This is in the form of a motion.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
We might add, in, in that letter, that we encourage the, uh, school board to work with the party that was, that made a presentation to us last work session, to work with them in, in acquiring that, uh, property for their, uh, nonprofit agency. Uh, they, as we discussed, they, the county has a need to, the school board has a need to do, uh, be rid of the property, and they have a need for the property. And so if they can get together and, uh, find some way to, uh, transport it to the nonprofit, perhaps they can, uh, do so in expedition play.
Is there any further discussion? You have anything, Mr. Holden? Is there any further discussion? Those in favor of this motion let it be known by show of hands. Known to oppose by the same sign, the motion is carried. The next thing we're up with, the mayor's not here. I don't know why the mayor's not here, I received a call from her sister about ten minutes of six that she would not be present, so that's extent of my knowledge. Are there any other presentations? Any other business? Do we have any citizens' presentations? Do we have anything from the citizenry? Now we have it, we go into executive session, we go into executive session.
I'd like, Mike, before we do anything else, is, is to give us a little update on the project, uh, the gas line up nineteen to, uh, Wind Gap Farms.
We're nearing completion of that, uh, I think this council, uh, knows that we were very lucky to, uh, get a brand-new natural gas customer, the Swengap Farms. They, they take yeast, uh, they get from a variety of places, but primarily from the mill brewing, uh, and process that into a coating for, uh, dog food, and, uh, they're a very strong company, brewing company, and they have a series of boilers up there, uh, that have been previously, uh, fired by either propane and/or wood chips, and they're gonna convert to natural gas. Uh, the City of Camilla will be running a line up there, uh, to them, and they're gonna run it from Equity Group, uh, behind Equity Group, and that was the subject of this easement. Uh, we needed to get out to the nineteen right away, but anybody that's been up to Auburn in the last couple of weeks has probably seen the pipeline along, and they've, uh, they're, they're coming along well with that project depending on weather problem. Uh, we hope to be able to have gas available to Wind Gap, uh, by the end of the month. It's about three miles of pipeline, and, uh, uh, it, it should be very good for the city and good for Wind Gap because they're gonna save a substantial amount of money, uh, by burning natural gas, and it's certainly a little more greener, uh, way of firing those boilers and wood chips, uh, so I think it's a win-win to everybody.
And as I understand, Wind Gap is funding the expansion.
They are, uh, this is at no cost to the city. Uh, the Wind Gap is, uh, actually paying for that gas line, although it was in prolonged to the city, and we will maintain it, have responsibility for it. Uh, the city has a match from a stipend that we get from Southern Natural Pipeline, so no public funds is offered at all. Uh, so it's Wind Gap's funds and the stipend that we get from Southern Natural Pipeline.
First.
Zero burden.
We just need to find two or three more of those beers.
We did.
Now, attorney, inform me that we need to go into a short executive session.
I'm looking at you.
And I'd also like to discuss some personnel issues.
You need a motion?
Who's motion?
I'll make that motion. I'll support that motion.
It has been so moved that we go into the executive session. May I have show of hands, approval?
Came in reference to Gould Grocery getting their alcohol license, uh, beer license, and I didn't know why it wasn't on the agenda or what happened.
Well, no, I asked for, for, present, what I asked for, citizens, citizens.
There wasn't anything on there.
I know we haven't done him.
I did, I asked for a citizen presentation.
I don't, we passed that.
He was, we passed, and he was saying back then.
On Two City Thomas Street, yes.
Yeah.
Oh, seven is approved.
Not this one.
Oh.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Now, it did come up the first in January, but you know-
They told me, they, they announced me to come on the fourteenth to, tonight.
The planning and zoning office did.
No, um, the, the lady, uh, yeah, is it to come tonight, or, you know, if I was approved tonight?
We approved it, I know. Yeah, we did. Because the same was a different person on Thomas Street, two forty, I read.
Two sixty.
Two sixty, Thomas Street.
What'd you say, something about the address?
Yeah, from Cairo, somebody on the Cairo address, the same address. Okay, that's, we did.
I'm approved?
I'm, wait a minute.
Well, it, let, let's, uh, I think to make sure, I, I can't recall without going back to look at the minutes.
Mike, the last meeting's right here, and I don't think it was approved in the usual meeting, we just approved it tonight.
Well, then, we could have a motion, uh, to approve this.
We just did make a motion and did it. It got left off the-
We got recommendations or anything, did we?
Yeah.
We had.
We had that at the work session.
We had, we had. We should have had the last work session, just to do it this, this stuff.
If you recall, they didn't make the January when we did the big list.
That's fine.
They didn't come in and renew, and missed that window, so that meant they had to come in and then, you know, renew anything.
Well, there was no problems.
Where did I, we was having done.
I think we'll do that now, so.
What did you, you apply for beer?
It was beer off, off premises beer.
Off premises.
And they said to come on the fourteenth to be recognized.
And what was the address it was gonna be?
Two sixty Thomas Street, Gould Grocery.
What's the name?
Gould Grocery.
Do, I've got my agenda, I think, on the work session in my truck, I'll have to go out and see if I can find it.
Well, if, if I can.
All right, you need a motion? I'll make the motion.
Second. It has been motion and second that we, uh, accept the application for carryout beer on, at two sixty Thomas Street. Those in favor, oh, is there any question? Those in favor let it be known by show of hands. It is so carried.
Sorry, I waited.
I waited, I didn't know who you were.
I just, I'm just-
But we did, that's what we did.
Okay, all right, thank you. Go ahead, go ahead.
Yes. No speed. I'm stupid.
I need signature. I need signature.
Now, we have come out of executive session and no actions were taken. So we have, we have.
Are we in motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion. I'll use the whole way.
May I have a motion to a carry? So we, so carried.